Your. Invitation from Bill Gilmore and the First Presbyterian Church, please stand.
Let us pray. Dear Lord God, we thank you for bringing us here this evening. We thank you for all the blessings that we've received and for prayers answered. Dear God, be with us this evening as we gather. Through your grace, provide wisdom and kindness in all decisions being made. Be with each of us and in our hearts that we can truly fulfill thy command to be good neighbors and let us with kindness and love go about doing the business for the community of Benita Springs, in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Well, pledge allegiance on three, one, two.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mayors welcome. Approval of the agenda. They're kind of special tonight. Lee County is going to make a presentation and after the presentation, we have a public comment period. That's after number eight. Before that, we have a public comment on the agenda in number seven. And before that, we have the mayors welcome. Well, you're welcome to be here. I'm glad to see you're here. This is a land of laws and without laws, we have no freedom. The laws are written to protect ourselves from each other. So law and order is a good thing.
Mayor, shall I call the roll?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Here.
Councilmember Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Here.
Okay. Public comment on the agenda items. Come forward, please.
This would be for everything but items eight, nine, and thirteen.
No, I'm sorry. They are allowed to comment on eight.
On eight? Okay, that's fine.
Nine and thirteen.
Right into it.
Thank you. My name is Kyle Moran, Felton Avenue in Benita Springs. I just wanted to thank the city council and your great staff for what a great job you're doing and making continuous improvements to our downtown. It's a really special area. We saw it on July 4th. We've seen it with a lot of other great events. And specific to item ten, I believe, on the agenda today, I wanted to comment on wayfinding and gateway signage. An opportunity to look through what has been put in the agenda package on that and find that the proposed family of signs was really well thought out and attractive looking. They're traditional but updated for today's standards. And I urge you to move forward in approving those signs. It's an important next finishing touch for that downtown area. If you look at it, over the last twenty-plus years since the city incorporated, the public has probably spent north of fifty million dollars in that downtown if you add up all the different improvements, including county funds and city funds and so forth. And yet, we don't have a single sign that says this way to the parking and this way to the library and this way to the park. And even worse, we don't yet have a great sign that says, "Welcome to our special historic downtown," but we will soon have that. And this wayfinding and gateway signage package will have benefits throughout our city, but it will have really important benefits as a finishing touch for our downtown. And at your last meeting, you wisely reviewed another package that had been worked on for some time with the building assessment of city-owned buildings. And I think made a very wise decision to move forward with relocating the sheriff's substation that's on the Banyan Tree Lot in the downtown. It was clear in that study that that building is low value and poor condition, so that's really a big liability and not a usable asset for the sheriff's department. And relocating them to a better area of the city has big benefits for our law enforcement, big benefits for our citizens, and also helps open up the canvas for our downtown. And there's a lot of consolidated land down there that is public land, all around the parks and the Lio's Hotel and Riverside Park, and we have plenty of parking. That's part of the massive investment that we've made. And those are great areas that are still serving our community, but we can, we really need to keep up and renovate a lot of those areas. The parks need to be renovated. They're tired, to put it nicely. And we still have shell parking areas down there that do not have lighting at night. So these are part of the finishing touches that have been carried out down there. I think a special thanks is due to Tony Backhurst and his Neighborhood Services Department. They have, as you've improved downtown, they have sharpened their focus on downtown and improving it. We had a lot of eyesore-type properties down there that were not, were clearly not in compliance with code. And I think through consistent work, and this is a hard bureaucratic process for them, they have consistently carried out improvements to make those areas great and bring everyone to the standard that that massive public investment that we talked about really necessitate. So, you know, a huge thanks to all of staff and multiple departments, including Neighborhood Services. But let's finish the job. Let's approve these signs and move forward. Let's figure out great plans for all those parcels. Let's make sure that we have the right advice. Maybe we hire DPC to take it to the next step. That's your expertise, not mine. Let's also take advantage of all these great funding sources that we're here to talk about shortly today because we are thankful to have a federal government that's written big checks for this area and a great Lee County Commission that's led a really robust process to make sure that we find out what is best for our community. And as you all know, Benita Springs is a very large and vibrant and growing city and should benefit as under the county's guidance. So thank you again for your time and thank you all for doing for our downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Anywhere else with public comment? Hey, there we go. Mr. Jim.
Hello. My name is Jim Magnus. Been resident of Benita Springs for more than thirty years. Hello, city staff, mayor, and city council. I agree with Kyle on item ten A, which is the wayfinding signing project. I'd like to see you guys move forward with that. On another note, passed in current city councils, mayors, and staff have fully supported the downtown revitalization projects. Lee County spent some forty million on the new library. Benita Springs spent some twenty million on the infrastructure in downtown. With help of DPC, you all have done a wonderful job improving the roads, the utilities, permitting, and water management downtown. The idea, I think, has always been to get private investment in the downtown area to revitalize it even more. That is now happening big time with the Baron Collier Project, Bamboo Village property, the Sugar Shack Project, Rooftop at Riverside. And I understand there's some other projects downtown being, that are currently in permitting as well. What I ask is to finish off the downtown city-owned properties to help make them a true destination. DPC has been with the city from the start on its vision for downtown. I suggest you hire them now to re-envision all the parks, Riverside Park, Depot Park, Island Park, the Banyan Tree Parcel. All these park areas need updating and revisioning. I also ask you to task DPC to reimagine parking as we have two locations that may be perfect for updating parking structure. You've got the bioreactor location. They could use some lighting. You have a new parking structure maybe possible over the water detention that is just east of the Baron Collier Project. That might be an option. And I wanted to thank you all. You've entrusted me as a member of the Resilient Lee Economic Recovery Branch. I've requested initiatives to support these and several other projects for Benita Springs. Hopefully, funds will be available to support these initiatives. Having a solid plan approved by the city of Benita Springs, I believe, will help to move them up on Resilient Lee grant list. Time is short. Please engage DPC or some other consultants that can envision a plan that we can go to Resilient Lee with. Board of County Commissioners votes on these for this 1.1 billion that's in this particular grant part on December 5th. So let's get this thing moving and hopefully we can get some projects that will be of benefit to Benita Springs. Hey, thanks all for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Anybody else? Don't be shy. Come on. Okay, eight. Now we've got Lee County.
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. I would like to welcome Assistant County Manager Glenn Salyer and Jeanne Sutton with Lee County. We have a great opportunity to be their first of a series of public workshops that they will be doing all across the county to engage the public and provide comment regarding the Lee County's draft action plan for community development block grant funding.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, thank you, city manager, mayor, council members. We really do appreciate your time this evening as, as Arlene mentioned, this is the first of nine public comment meetings throughout the month of August. And while the draft action plan that we'll talk about tonight for community development block grant disaster recovery funds has already been built on a lot of community input, the feedback on this specific plan will be used to construct what is finally submitted to HUD. So it is vital that we get the community input. See if I get the right one here. Very good. So this is a lot of information. We'll try to distill it down to the bare essence. If I skip over anything that you want to talk about, please just let me know. We will do our best to address it. You all are well aware that Lee County has received a direct allocation from HUD of 1.1 billion dollars in CDBGDR funds, which is the second-largest direct allocation to a local government in the program's history. Because these are HUD dollars, the emphasis is going to be on housing, urban development, and assistance to low, moderate-income households. I want to take just a second and talk about low, moderate income because it can be a little misleading in that low income is generally considered eighty percent or less of area median income. Moderate income is generally eighty-one to one hundred twenty percent. But when we use the term together, low, moderate income, we are specifically referring to eighty percent and less of area median income. And I don't know if you can see the chart very well here, but it does show you what that translates to in dollar terms throughout Lee County. So there are a number of eligible activities that these funds can be used for. Obviously, we've talked about housing already, public facilities and critical infrastructure, economic revitalization, various public services, planning efforts, and then there is an allotment for administering the program over its life. This is expected to be a six-year program. The timeline on the right, I would just like to point out that we will take public comment, as I said, through August 31st. Those comments will be compiled and submitted to the Board of County Commissioners at their September 5th meeting. They will provide any final direction they want to give to modify the plan. They will ultimately adopt it on September 19th and it will be submitted to HUD on September 20th. Thereafter, HUD will undertake a review process. There may be some back and forth between us and them, but ultimately, we will have an approved plan from HUD and the money can start flowing after that.
Can I question real quick?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the fifteenth is the last day and then the nineteenth, it'll be finalized. Is, when will, when will we know exactly what we're looking at? Is, do we just have, we're going to find out and then we're ready? We have to have it ready to go by then or how does that work?
So the September 5th County Commission.
Oh, fifth, fifth. I'm sorry. I thought you said fifteenth. And then it was September 19th and I'm like, that's not a lot of turnaround time.
Yes, sir. I beg your pardon. It's September 5th. That's when they will provide final direction for us to codify as part of the plan.
So if we as a city had a problem with whatever it looked like at that juncture, we'd still have a week and a half to get to our county commissioners and address it.
My, yes, but my suggestion would be to provide your feedback during the month of August.
No, of course, of course. I'm just saying, if for some reason it didn't go the way we wanted, we would have the ability for a week and a half to at least lobby on our own behalf.
I mean, ultimately, yes, the board could change the plan all the way up until September 19th.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So HUD had performed a calculation to determine this 1.1 billion dollar award. That's the top table on this slide. You can see that they had calculated a 700 million dollar unmet need for housing. Then you see the infrastructure, economic revitalization categories after that. The mitigation funding is a statutory set aside, so they take those previous three categories, total that up, add fifteen percent to the amount, and that's where they come up with the 144 million dollars. That statutory set aside for mitigation is key because those monies can be used for resiliency efforts that are not directly related to Hurricane Ian impacts. The rest of the funds do have to be spent on projects that are relate, I would say directly related. You can also have indirect relation. But really, you have to have a hurricane Ian impact for the rest of the monies. Now, we as staff have undertaken our own unmet needs analysis, and that's the table at the bottom of the slide. And we've used more localized and current data than what HUD had available to them when they originally made their calculation. And I think the important thing about that number is not the specifics, but rather to say you can see that we are calculating our unmet need as at least eight billion dollars. I think that's a conservative estimate. And so it really just shows that the unmet need throughout the community vastly dwarfs the amount of CDBGDR funds that are available. So we've had a lot of stakeholder and public engagement to date. You're aware of the Recovery Task Force and its town hall meetings. In addition to that, Lee County staff have conducted stakeholder consultations. And really, when you look at the two different efforts, you see that the priorities amongst all of these various groups align pretty well in that infrastructure and housing are the top two categories. They're reversed whether you're looking at the town hall or the stakeholder consultations, but nonetheless, the top two needs are still the same.
Sir, what do you consider infrastructure?
It's what you would think. It's roads, it's drainage, it could be utilities.
Seawalls?
Seawalls are included. Yes, sir.
We need, we need some work on our seawalls.
Understood. Yes, that would be included.
Okay, thank you.
And so using all of that information, we have recommended the following allocations of these funds in the draft action plan. We have 660 million dollars for housing, and that includes individual occupied housing reconstruction, elevation. It includes new affordable unit development. That can be single-family homes or multifamily. We have a homebuyer purchasing assistance program for repetitive flood loss properties. And, I'm sorry, I just said that incorrectly. I meant to say voluntary buyout program for repetitive flood loss properties. The homebuyer assistance program is for income-qualified individuals who need help with a down payment, an interest rate buydown, closing costs, that sort of thing. Help get them into an affordable unit. For public infrastructure, there are two categories, 352 million dollars. The percentage of funds that we're recommending greatly exceeds what HUD had originally calculated as a percentage of the award. But that, again, goes back to the unmet needs analysis and what the community and stakeholders have told us are their priorities. And so the 350 million dollars consists of two things, a critical infrastructure program that municipalities can apply for and a hazard mitigation grant project matching fund program. The city of Benita Springs, as well as the other municipalities, the counties, special districts, have applied to the state for hazard mitigation grant project funding. If those projects are awarded, we intend to provide the 25% matching funds that are required of the project sponsor. So any FDEM awards to the city of Benita Springs, you could use these funds as your local match. Public services, we've included a couple of things here. Five million dollars for the long-term recovery group unmet needs effort. This is a group of nonprofits, faith-based charities, et cetera, who continue to provide services to those households that were dramatically impacted by the storm and are still recovering. That effort is actually led by Catholic charities. They were selected in a competitive bidding process, but it really is a consortium of many, many nonprofits. And then the other thing that we are recommending is money to establish a behavioral health system of care. So right now, we have a homelessness continuum of care process, a coordinated entry process, if you will. We don't have anything like that for mental behavioral health needs, and so we'd like to see that happen in this community, and these funds can be used for that. The planning category recommends 25 million dollars. That does include the creation of this CDBGDR action plan. It does include the efforts of the long-term resiliency task force. And beyond that, it allows for around 21 million dollars of funding that could be applied for by municipalities, special districts, school district, et cetera. It's really a resiliency-focused planning effort there that we're looking for, but it's a broad category of studies that you could undertake. And then finally, there is the program and administration category. And while that is a big number, again, the minimum life of this program will be six years. And those funds do potentially have to cover expenses outside peer administration. So for instance, if we undertake a CDBGDR project that for any reason fails or doesn't come to fruition, we have to pay for that out of other funding sources. The administrative funding source can actually be used to cover those kinds of costs, so it's not just program administration. I think each of you have a cover sheet that we provided that provides a really detailed breakdown of the allocation scheme that I just went through. So I won't spend a lot of time on these slides. This just covers that so that the audience can get a sense of individual program allocations. In terms of eligibility criteria, there are just a few things to discuss. On the housing side, the individual occupied housing programs is pretty straightforward. The household is qualified by income level, and that goes back to the income requirements that we talked about at the beginning. For new unit development, the key is that a developer would need to set aside 51% or more of the units created for low-income households. So long as they do that, the entire project qualifies. In terms of eligible areas, the next column there, that is primarily for infrastructure projects. You would determine what the service area that benefits from the infrastructure project would be. And again, 51% of those households would need to be low income. In terms of the clientele, that really goes to the public services category. And for instance, the families that are being served by the unmet needs recovery group and those that could potentially be served by the behavioral health continuum of care, those, again, will self-qualify. And finally, that last column, we've included because CDBGDR funds can be used for economic revitalization. The challenge with that in terms of getting money directly to businesses is that those businesses would have to create or maintain a specified level of jobs available to low-income persons. And they have to do that for a period of years. And if at any point in time they fail to do that, the granting entity would have to go back and claw the money back from the business. So what we have recommended in the draft action plan, that the best way to benefit the economy as a whole is to provide housing for workforce and to build infrastructure that all of our businesses rely on. This chart, it's just to provide an example of how we will need to phase these projects in to meet HUD's low, moderate-income requirements. This particular one is for the individual housing program, and you can see that we would serve the lowest-income applicants first and ultimately work our way down as long as the money lasts to higher-income households. In terms of eligibility criteria for new housing development, municipalities, housing authorities, and both for-profit and nonprofit developers can apply for funding. For the critical infrastructure program, again, it's really just the county and the municipalities. And then for planning funds, it's the county, municipalities, special districts, and the school district. I would say on the critical facilities, infrastructure category, you as a municipality can partner with other entities if you think there's some. can partner with other entities if you think there's some infrastructure that you want to see in your area. But you would be the applicant and the county's sub-recipient if awarded. And this slide speaks to the notice of funding availability process. So if we're talking about infrastructure in particular, I think that's a good example. The county will release a notice of funding availability specifying when we're accepting applications. Those would be given a technical review by subject matter experts to make sure the projects are eligible. It would then go, the project application package would go to a evaluation committee who ultimately is going to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners who award funding. And the prioritization criteria that are included in the plan are pretty standard, nothing that will surprise you. We're looking, we'll be of course looking for shovel-ready projects that provide other funding sources or leverage other funding sources, are consistent with existing plans, sort of the normal prioritization categories. In terms of the left column on the process, I do just want to say that the draft action plan outlines that process at a conceptual level. No determinations have been made about who would be on the evaluation committee. That is all subject to input, and I think that would be a great topic perhaps for the city and others to weigh in on. And then finally, beating a dead horse here, but we are taking public comment on the draft plan through the month of August. You can do that either in person at these public meetings or electronically. And if you go to our website, there's an electronic form that you can submit, or you can just click on the email address and do that. If you really want to, you can also send us snail mail, we'll accept those as well. But the website address is at the bottom, and that's where you can find all of the information, including the draft plan and lots of other CDBGDR information. So with that, I appreciate your time, and we'll try to answer any questions that you have.
Yes. Would you be able to indulge the public at this meeting right now? People come up, get ready to make your comments. I know some people are going to come up and they're going to have some questions directly to you. Would you be able to do that for us?
Yes, Mayor, we are, yes, we are prepared to record any comments, and we will compile those as part of the process.
Okay. We have to have some public come up, yes.
Mayor, the public comments that are made here today, our clerk will be making a special effort to make sure that that's included and given back to Lee County for their report. Also, we'll be sharing all of this material on our website as well, so there'll be direct links to these websites and to the portals to provide the information. We're going to share that information as well.
Okay. And speakers, please fill out a speaker's form so that our clerk can get your name right, get your spelling right. Okay, public comment, how about some people come up?
I think Nigel.
Oh, go ahead.
Wait a minute, you're not, you're not public. Let me get a public comment first.
Generally, we would go and then we would do it however you'd like to do it. As long as we get an opportunity, that's.
Let's get the public involved here. Come on, come on, all people here, nobody's got any questions? Going once? Come on, don't be shy. I know what you want.
You do?
Yeah.
Greetings.
Anne Brandell, 25756, Old Gaslight Drive, Benita. Been a resident here for 20 years, pastor of a church, and a former director of an agency. I commend you all on the project. It's a big job, and it's, we're blessed to have this amount of funding, but being out in the field, it's been very frustrating to have projects that we want to submit for this and not know how to do it. So I think, I don't know if I speak for anyone here, but some projects, somewhere over this famous portal is, some projects got in, some projects didn't. Who should we contact? There just seems to be some lack of clarity on how we as a public can propose projects in these various areas.
You mentioned to me one time about 11 duplexes. Is that what you're talking? Can you expose everybody to your, to what you were thinking about?
Mayor and council, what I understand is there'll be a notice of funding. I'll let Glenn come forward, and so there would be a process for them to submit their project once we get through this public hearing process.
That's right. So there is no application intake process yet. We do have to go through all of this analysis. HUD has to approve the expenditure plan. Once all of that happens, we will then create those application processes. So if it's an individual homeowner, for instance, that will be one set of applications. If it's for new housing development, we will release a notice of funding availability, at which point developers are eligible to apply. So really, nothing has happened in that regard yet.
And Glenn, to clarify, what might be the question is, there was an intake process for the Resiliency Task Force, which is separate of this process, and that might be where projects were submitted. And I understand that our liaisons have been continually to enter those on behalf of the citizenry that has those come in.
Any public anymore? Come on up.
Please come to us.
Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Brandon Miller. My one question is, when you all, do you all give out the money directly to the businesses, to the developers? Or do you all give the money to the municipalities who then accept these applications and whatnot?
So the answer is, it depends in that if it's a municipal-sponsored project, then the city would be a sub-recipient, and they would receive funding necessary for the project. If it's a housing developer, then they would be the sub-recipient. So it just depends on who the applicant is and what the awarded project is.
These applications are available, not now, though.
No, sir. They won't be until probably, well, it's likely to be late this calendar year or early next. We have to wait for HUD to sign off on everything that we're proposing. So let me say this and that.
How are you going to know a proposal if you don't have an application?
I beg your pardon, sir?
How can you make, how can you know what the proposal's going to be if you don't have applications?
Well, we will release notices of funding availability specifying what amount of money is available, for which specific category, during what timeframe. And at that point, project sponsors would submit an application for that money.
And that information's on the website? Is that the only place you can find it?
Well, it will be available on the website as these roll out, but again, that won't be until probably late this calendar year or early next year.
So Mayor, we were, we're not able to accept applications until HUD accepts the plan of how the funds will be allocated. That's the first step. The federal government has to accept the plan that the county commission will set forth to them.
County commission's going to set, is the next move, is the county commissioner? Next, next?
The county commission will submit a plan to HUD. Once HUD approves the plan, then there will be a mechanism for the county to put notices of funding out for the folks to actually apply for that funding.
And when does the county make, do that?
We can't tell you yet, Mayor, because again, until, it could take as much as 60 days for HUD to review the plan and come back.
When is the county commissioner going to put a plan out?
So we will submit the plan to HUD on September 20th.
Okay, very good.
They then have 60 days to review it.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. And if I may clarify, you know, we're talking about infrastructure projects and the city being a sub-recipient, or new unit development and developers being a sub-recipient, but the largest category of programs will be individual homeowners or landlords who have rental properties that are affordable. In those cases, so in the individual homeowner programs, for instance, the homeowner will make the application, but the county will provide the service. No money is given directly to the homeowner, rather, it goes to the contractors who do the work. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Anybody else?
How do you define affordable?
Wait, 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 wait.
I know.
You're out of turn and out of order. Yes, Jesse, please?
I'm not sure if you were there or not, and I was, I received the second hand from another local leader. I was told that there was a, there was a walk-on ask for $5 million, $3 million for Hagerty, and $2 million for the collaboratory at the Board of County Commissioners meeting. I haven't had an opportunity to watch it yet when they talked about the storm. So first of all, if that is true, I have a number of questions. If that's not true, and this is just a misunderstanding, I'd just like to clarify that. So if you could start with, A, is that true, and was the walk-on accepted?
Commissioner Ruane did make a request to his colleagues to entertain an additional task order for the Long Term Recovery Task Force to undertake a series of neighborhood planning efforts. The board decided to defer that request to get more information so that they could make a decision on that.
All right. So would that be something that the board would vote on? Or is that something, how, logistically, how could that work? Because here, and I just want to be clear with why. And it's not a specific issue with this nonprofit per se, but let's just say, prior to the storm, this was an organization that was on the noble quest to the moon, where they were going to solve all of the world's problems, poverty, hunger, racism, and all of these things. Fast forward, we have a storm, and now they're running point on the task force. These aren't planners or people who are tied into this subset of what we're working on. It's a nonprofit that was never focusing on these things. And now we're talking about giving them $2 million. My question is, for what would that, what is the justification for that, if that's the case? And you could sub them out with anybody, but you put the nonprofit in there and you say you're going to give them $2 million. I would like to understand what that's for, because there's a lot of things. We were just talking about the fact that we have more need than we can possibly pay for, right? $2 million is a lot of money. And the extra three, I'm not saying Hagerty doesn't deserve it, maybe they do. I don't know what it's for, though. So if it's true, I would just like to see what the specifics are on why they would want those dollars, and then understand what the process would be for approval of that. So if that was going to actually come to fruition, is that something that's decided on a task force level, or is that something the commission votes on?
So I'm not aware of what the funding breakdown would be if that's approved, so I don't know how much would go to Hagerty, how much would go to the collaboratory, or even another subcontractor. I'm not aware of that. And I think that's why the commission asked for additional information before they make any decisions. But the answer on the process question is that the Board of County Commissioners would have to approve that request. If they did so, we would have to amend what we've shown you today on the action plan, because right now, it does include Long Term Recovery Task Force efforts, but at a specified level of funding, as you see on your sheet there. And so that would have to be increased. So there's a number of steps that would have to happen.
Well, and my understanding is, we have an entire staff now on a county level that it's either you or Dave that runs the entire unit, and it's specific people who are dedicated to just working specifically on this. So we are allocating a large amount to that. So I'm just saying, if there's a $2 million add-on, I just want to understand what that's for, and then I want to understand what that process looks like. So, all right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any more public? Laura?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Way back when you mentioned that first come will be individual homes and then rental units, and affordable. How do you define affordable rent?
Well, again, affordable is defined, for eligibility determination, affordable is a household at 80% or less of area median income, and I can go back to the chart. In terms of rent, what that means in dollar terms, I'm going to ask Jeannie Sutton if she happens to know off the top of her head. I think she does, she's our housing expert.
Yes. So fair market rent is established by HUD, and it varies based on bedroom size. Fair market rent is set by the metropolitan area, so Cape Coral, Fort Myers, Benita is all included in that. For one bedroom, I want to say it's somewhere around $700 or $800 right now. However, for these programs, any housing units that are assisted through new construction or redevelopment, the rent that is charged to the tenant cannot exceed 30% of their annual income. So with the maximum being the fair market rent.
Thank you.
All right. Well, rent's $1,500 a month around here, so nobody'd be eligible, so forget about it. Yes?
Jeannie, would you like, she looks like she wants to comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, so the eligibility is based on the income of the households, not what they're currently paying for rent. What Councilwoman Carr was asking, I think, is what rents will be charged for new units that are developed as part of this program.
And is there aren't any units for that price? Nobody gets any.
Well, the new affordable units to be developed would have to be offered at that price to qualify for this subsidy.
Yes. Nigel, please.
Glenn, first of all, thank you for coming this evening and being available. Slide six on the draft action plan allocations. So my question is, both under housing, the owner and renter occupied housing, if we're financing new projects for both ownership and rental, I have a concern about the rental portion. It's happened in other parts of the state and country where developers have come in, offered low rents, and two, three years later, they turn into conversions, and we've basically financed somebody's project for them. How do we not do that in Lee County?
Yes, sir, good question. So we, they do have to put restrictive covenants on the property. In fact, the rental period has to be maintained for 20 years. I'm going to make sure that's right. Yes, 20 years. And if at any point that's not the case, then we have legal means by which to claw back the funding.
Well, hopefully, we'll save some outside developers a trip to Lee County. Second question was, under reconstruction and elevation, here in Benita, obviously, we have a lot of the older homes that suffered storm damage and flooding. When you came up with these numbers, what did you use for the number of units that would possibly be affected or be the benefits of elevating properties residentially? And then what did you use as a number per unit?
In terms of the dollar amounts?
Right. I know it's kind of granular, but.
No, that's fine. Yeah, in, well, in terms of the unmet needs analysis, for how many units we think could qualify, I don't have the number off the top of my head, I doubt you do, but we used a lot of insurance FEMA data, primarily FEMA, quite frankly. So we have all their verified loss data, and that's what went into the analysis to try to get some gauge of what we think the demand could be. In terms of setting the dollar amounts, Jeannie can speak to that pretty specifically, so I'm going to let her.
Yes, so the maximum amount of assistance that's established in the plan right now is $450,000 per housing unit for elevation and reconstruction, and that's based off some similar projects that were recently done in the county.
Thank you.
So if somebody has an income qualified, he could help into his house, he's happy at his house, and he gets a raise, and now he's making too much money, does he have to move?
No, sir, we would determine eligibility at the time of application.
At the time of application, but what, you know, you're talking 20 years, you got to hold the rent?
So for the individual program, it's a five-year period by which they have, they can't sell the house, flip it for a profit. So over that five years, the subsidy self-amortizes 20% per year.
Okay, what if the guy gets a better job and makes more money than he qualified to get in there? Does he have to stay poor his whole life? Is what I'm, is what it sounds like to me. If he wants the subsidy, he has to stay poor.
Well, he doesn't have to stay poor, but if he flips the house for a profit, then he does have to repay that.
What if he sells it for what he paid for?
So, Mayor, it's extremely similar to the program that you have for the Assistance for Historic Preservation, record a mortgage to the property for five years, and they're not able to resell it. If so, there's a recapture of the grant dollars they received that comes back to the city.
I understand that part, but if the guy comes in with a low income or middle income, and then in two years, he gets a nice raise, does he have to move out of that property?
So Mayor, are you requesting if they're a person who is renting a location, who income-qualified for a rental unit? Because if it's a single-family home, they're not going to continually recognize that income level, he's just not able to, they're not able to sell it within that time period. level, he's just not able to, they're not able to sell it within that time period. But if you're asking if an individual who pre-qualifies for a rental unit, that's through the developer, correct? And the developer has to maintain that program and maintain those units at that subsidized rate?
That's right.
That's on the developer.
So if he's a renter, then that's, that's different.
Yes.
But then again, if he gets a raise, he has to move. If he gets too much money, he's got to move.
Well, the developer has to maintain at least fifty-one percent of the units available to these low-income residents. So, one way or another, they have to make, we certify that annually, and they have to make sure that fifty-one percent of those units are rented by low-income renters.
So Glenn, are the people that are renting on an annual basis required to provide their income?
They, they do have to continually recertify.
And how do they do that?
So we would have the project owner maintain that, that data, but then we have to audit it. Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, it is a heavy enforcement burden. We understand that, but it's, that's what comes with the funding.
Mayor and Council, similar to the program of the economic development programs we used to have, where we looked at the employment that happened within the city, actually Glenn and I worked on that, and Lisa and I would actually have to go to the business and audit the state, state tax, income tax. And then we reported that back to Lee County, in essence, who reported it to the state of Florida. So there is an auditing process that the county would be taking on in that project with the developer of that, of that, of that program, similar to how we've done it before.
You've got templates for it.
We got the same si--
You have templates for, you, you understand how the program works?
Oh, yes, yes. We have, and, and actually, we, we have similar programs through our entitlement funding as well, so.
Okay, now you also have with the job, if you make too mu, if the guy hires in, in a business, he has to be a low wage forever?
If we were providing direct grants to businesses, yes, there would absolutely be a job maintenance requirement for low-income employees. But we're not proposing that as part of this plan, because again, given the limited money available to us, we think these other categories will provide a better benefit to the entire economy.
Yes, Fred?
Yeah, well, first of all, I wanted to compliment Glenn on taking a fairly complex situation, and HUD makes the ground rules and all that. Possibly, I'm just saying, I think it's possible that if you moved in at one income level that qualified, and you moved up to where you were still within the low or low moderate, but it could be that the rent would be adjusted up, because I think the rent's subsidized to get, get in a position he can rent at, isn't it?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. If I understand the question, I, I mean, the rents do adjust annually?
Yeah, if, but if he went up in salary, but he's still entitled to stay there, but he got a substantial raise that moved him up, that may be another possibility. I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying that's, and I, and if you don't know for sure, don't worry about it. I think you guys are, got a complex situation, HUD makes the rules, unfortunately, so.
I think the end goal was to be make sure that, that, that facility, that rental unit, the developer of that, is maintaining the fifty-one percent, and that's the end goal. Whether, what, who the individuals are is not necessarily the end goal, the fifty-one percent is the end goal, that you would be making sure. So folks could move.
That's right.
Move within the, within their income levels, it doesn't necessarily require them to move. They might bring in other folks who meet the threshold, and so that's, that's all part of the auditing process that, that Lee County would be doing.
Yeah. Good.
Anybody else? More public? Any other public questions? Yes?
Glenn?
Chris Corry. Yeah, I'm a member of the Resiliency Task Force. I think there's a lot, there's been a lot of confusion over the role of the task force vis-à-vis the CDBGDR grant. When the task force was formed in March, you know, the, the grant was announced, and it was a direct grant to Lee County. And it came before the task force to try to figure out the allocations and so forth. And, and you've got a slide in here that does a comparison, and I can understand that. But there's a lot of people represented on that task force and represented in the branches that I will just say feel like the work that they've done in terms of identifying priorities has been set aside by staff. And I'm not saying that's the case. But, you know, when, when the task force first started, Commissioner Ruane, more or less, laid out the marching orders to, that was taken to CDBGDR and saying, you know, we need to be, find a way to make Lee County more resilient so that it's not as impacted in, in the future by a storm like Ian as it was, and that it's better able to respond to severe hurricanes in the future. And what's that, what that sort of meant to people on Fort Myers Beach, and Sanibel, and Cape Coral, and Pine Island, and so forth, was that the focus was going to be on those areas. So I, I think you're going to hear a lot of pushback from especially people on Sanibel that says, well, wait a minute, we were, we were told we were going to have a voice in this, and this was going to somehow benefit Sanibel, but now the task force seems to be out of the loop, and, you know, our needs, our needs are not being met by this particular grant. I can understand that from the standpoint HUD sets the rules, and the county's got to abide by the rules. Somewhere in this whole process from March to the current date, there was a misunderstanding or a change in how this was going to work. And I'm fine with it, because, you know, this is all sort of new. Direct grants are not that frequent, and Lee County's lucky to have it. But I will say that there, you know, I have received a lot of calls from branch members that say, what the hell have I done in terms of spending time, working on these branch priorities, going to town hall meetings and so forth? It seems like nothing that we've done is going to carry forward into this, the grant process. So I'm just, I'm just wanting to point out that as you go through your public comments in other areas of the county, you're likely to run into people who are confused by this. And, you know, there needs to be a clear message that this particular grant is separate and apart from what really the task force should have been focused on to start with, and that's the total unmet needs of the county, which the task force has now identified at about ten and a half billion dollars. And finding those sources of funding to meet those unmet needs from the twenty-seven federal agencies that offer grants. So if we can somehow sort of clarify and clean up that message, it would, might be helpful to a lot of people who have spent a lot of time in the branches working on things, and who feel sort of frustrated with seeming to think that the rug's been pulled out from under. It's just a suggestion, and I'll leave it up to, to you and, and your team to, to take a look at.
Well, Councilman, Councilman Corry, I appreciate that input. Thank you, from a task force member. We, we have tried our best to capture the priorities generally within the confines of HUD's rules as, as best we can. I think this comment period will help flesh out how well or not that we've done that. But I hear you loud and clear, we probably have a messaging initiative that, that we need to undertake. And I do think that ultimately, the recovery plan that the task force is working on, it is going to be all-encompassing. It dwarfs the one-point-one billion dollars of CDBGDR funds, and it is going to be incumbent on all of us to partner on our advocacy at both the federal and state levels, because we need a lot more funding for unmet needs.
And to be clear, Lee County staff did reach out directly to Madam myself and has kept us informed as they receive information from HUD. So they were very clear of the requirements to our staff, of the restrictions involved with, with this funding. So we'll continue to provide that information at our meetings as well.
Yes, Fred.
I, I, I can see what Chris is saying, and I, and he's, he's right, but the one thing that was said from day one, and I don't think a lot of people understood it as well as we did, Ellie McEwen and so on, it clearly said, affordable housing has got to fit low-to-moderate income people, doesn't go beyond that. Second of all, that we have to spend a lot of money, that if it's not on housing, whatever we do, we got to keep, try and do stuff for the affordable, or for that low-income, moderate-income level. And unfortunately, a lot of these areas that are not too happy don't have near as many of those people there. And it's the reality of the situation. But I think, I'm hoping that we can get it all worked out.
Yes, sir. And if I may say one thing about that, I showed you a prioritization slide, just an example of the processes that we're proposing, and, and that is intended to allow us to go back to HUD, hit some undefined future date, to say, we have gone through the process, we have satisfied the low, moderate income needs in the community, now we need to move on and address some of these other needs. They will only provide that waiver after we've demonstrated this process, so that's how we've set it up, in the hopes that there will be some funding available outside those areas in the future.
Yes, Chris. One question, I do have, Glenn, there was a request made by, I think Hagerty is part of this process we've been going through, to identify a neighborhood project, what they call the eight square blocks. It's not really eight square blocks, but we identified probably about a month ago, Arlene, well, I guess Matt was involved, the Rosemary Park area, because it also had commercial frontage on 041. Now, is that something that's being considered a use of the CDBGDR monies, or is that off, onto the other sources of funding that the task force would be looking at? Is that kind of neighborhood project included in this economic, whatever you want to call it?
Yeah. I think I could best answer that by saying that that type of planning is CDBGDR eligible. The neighborhood plans, goes back to the question that Councilman Purdon had earlier, that was a request that was broached at the last Board of County Commissioner meeting, and the, the commissioners asked for additional information to understand what the scope of that project would be, methodology, intended outcomes, those sorts of things. So I think that request is pending, but I will also answer it by way of saying, planning is an eligible category, and the way we've set up the draft action plan, the city can apply to study any, any area that it, that it so chooses.
My understanding--
Well, I, my thought is, wouldn't we be, wouldn't it be more advantageous to actually outsource that to a company that actually does that, as opposed to an organization that doesn't do that?
I think that's twofold. So that's a question, what you're saying, Councilmember, is that the, the county commission's going to discuss it if it specifically goes that direction. The other option that Glenn just proposed, that is if the city wants to do that, when the notice of funding comes available, we as a city could apply for that funding, and then we would then do our own RFP to hire our own consultant to go through that neighborhood planning process. So there's, there's two paths forward as an ability for--
Time-wise, do those run in tandem?
I think the question is, is what the decision will be made by the county commission once they have that discussion, their discussion. So if they offer it that way--
Right, but if this part isn't even in the discussion?
No, I believe when they discussed neighborhood plans, there was, there was outreach from the Resiliency Task Force. That's, that's how the outreach happened to Council, Councilmember, is, is, is there any ideas of any neighborhood planning? That came from the task force consultants from Hagerty.
From Hagerty.
They asked for feedback from the city of Benita on any specific location that made sense for community planning. That is the, the discussion we had, and then Councilmember Corry brought that to this council to say, that's the area that we provided to the consultant Hagerty. I believe that's part of the conversation that the county commission will have specifically. It does not preclude us from applying once the notice of funding becomes available for any other neighborhood. So if there's further discussion from council, and there's another neighborhood that makes sense, I think that's separate of that, we can still apply through the planning portion once the notice of funding becomes available.
I just want to make sure from a, you know, time-wise, that if these need to run in tandem, run in tandem, so that we're, I mean, they have to, we don't want to count on, not that we, not that we aren't going to say we don't want to count on the county, but if it, if it, if that is not one of the ones that happens to be considered, we need to have a backup plan and be running our own route to ensure that we hopefully get what we need in that regard.
Well, Council, we can work with Councilmember Corry to reach out to the consultant, or reach out to Hagerty to verify that we're included.
Yeah, we're going to have a one-on-one with Hagerty in what--
So, so as far as, we will have, yeah, I think, I don't want to steal Councilmember Corry's thunder, but we've been requested, Councilmember Corry's been asked to come with staff, city staff, to have a one-on-one meeting with Hagerty to talk about our unmet needs and prioritization of projects. We've made it clear in writing to the consultant that Councilmember Corry is here to give some guidance, but the final decision of prioritization has to come back to city council for approval before it's part of the plan. So we're having a meeting, I think, August--
Eighth.
Eighth or ninth, it's a Wednesday. Then we would be able to come back to our meeting in August with the information we received from the consultant on the prioritization, and have that reviewed by the full council.
I've been approached with eleven duplexes on a piece of property that belongs to a not-for-profit in the Rosemary Park area. Has that been brought up?
So, so Mayor and Council, what, that would happen after the action plan is reviewed and goes through the HUD process, they will determine that this is an appropriate allocation of percentage of funding, and then the county would be able to offer an application. So it is not ripe yet for them to apply at this point.
Anything else?
As far as the, the planning goes, if we're talking about somewhere like Rosemary, could you take some of that money if we were talking about doing other facilities there, like a swimming pool?
So separate of that, that is a project you've already submitted to the consultant as well. So this was a neighborhood planning project.
That's part of our comp plan, correct?
So this would be more of a, a neighborhood plan, be similar to comprehensive planning. If you're looking to actually make improvements to a facility, that, that's some of the projects we already submitted, and the pool was one of them that we put on the list.
I'm just wondering if any of the planning dollars, or if any of these dollars could be used for that, the HUD?
I, I would imagine there is an opportunity for infrastructure that accommodates the, we can show that it's in the census tract for low-to-moderate income community, and that that's the infrastructure it's supporting. So that would be some of the criteria the county would lay out, and we would have to show how we are meeting that unmet need that that facility is supporting.
We can use those funds instead of our own? Great.
We, we have, the city owns a piece of property with, with a seawall that's been damaged with the flood on the Imperial River when the river came up, and, and the seawall is damaged. Has that been approached?
So I think what might be helpful is, once Councilmember Corry and staff meet with the consultant, where we're going to, we'd be looking at all of the projects, and we bring that prioritization back, that is the time to add any additional projects. And then once we have an idea of the notice of funding, we're going to need to come back to council, and you're going to prioritize what projects we're going to apply for. So that would be the time to discuss that.
Anything else?
I would like to take the opportunity to thank Glenn for coming here this evening--
Thank you.
--and let us be the experiment to pick off. And Jeanne, as well, thank you as well. They have been very supportive to our staff throughout the whole process. They've been keeping us briefed all along, and we greatly appreciate that partnership. And we also want to please express our gratitude to Dave Harner as well, so thank you.
We will, and thank you. You guys have been marvelous to work with, as always. You guys have been marvelous to work with, as always. We really appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we've got nine A. Does the city attorney on this one?
Yes, the clerk's going to go ahead and read the title of the ordinance and then I will swear in any witnesses.
This is the second reading of zoning ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, granting a variance from LDC Section 4-2399(c)(2), which requires a setback of five feet to allow a setback of 3.1 feet along the northern side property line for a cantilevered structure on a residential property in Bonita Springs and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Michael. At this time, I would want to swear in staff, the applicant, and any representatives. Please raise your right hand and you swear affirm and tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you very much. Staff will give a brief presentation now.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'll just briefly introduce the project. This is a residential variance request for a 1.9-foot encroachment into the side and base street setback for a cantilevered structure to service the lawfully existing pool equipment at 26659 Hickory Boulevard. Staff and the zoning board both recommended approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report, and the applicant does agree with those conditions.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
I see this picture. The presentation or what are you doing?
Mr. Mayor, would you, maybe the applicant has better exhibits that might solve, answer your questions before? We'll get off track.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council, evening, excuse me. For the record, Amy Sarazin Tabo with Pavey's Law Firm. We are here to present on behalf of the applicant. And before we do so, I would first like to acknowledge and thank staff for all of their thoughtful and very thorough review of this request. I can assure you, the recommendation of approval did not come lightly and we are very grateful. So the subject property is the one that's highlighted right there on the east side of Hickory Boulevard at 26659 Hickory Boulevard. This is a single-family home that was constructed just a couple of years ago. It's a zone RS1, single-family, moderate-density residential. The lot is approximately 1.16 acres. Again, developed with a three-story, single-family residence. So the request here, as Mary mentioned, is for a small encroachment into the side setback. And the reason for this is that we have some pool equipment that is located on the second story of the home, about 21 feet up in the air. And as of right now, the only way to access it is via a ladder. So we have about a five-foot setback from the structure and we have a 21-foot ladder going up to the pool equipment. There is no platform on which to stand when you service the pool equipment. And in fact, the conditions are so dangerous that several pool companies have come out and have refused to service the pool. Not a single professional pool company will come out and service this pool. In fact, the property owners have been doing it themselves. In just a moment, we will show you pictures, we will show you the size of the pool filter, and I think it will really illustrate why this is a tremendous safety and health concern. With that, I'll turn it over to Lindsay Robyn.
Good evening, council, Lindsay Robyn. I'm a certified planner at Morris Depew, here tonight on behalf of the applicant. Thank you. Okay, so Amy has covered the technical nature of our request here and I just wanted to show you some photos here that are really going to show what the request is for. So here we have the pool itself, which is located on the second floor, off to the left there. To the right is the screened-in pool equipment. You'll see that's on the exterior side of the house. It's screened in and a very difficult to get to, dangerous location. And here is that steep, narrow ladder that Amy had mentioned in her intro there. It's about 22 feet up in the air to get to that pool equipment that was located on the side of the house. I also wanted to note that the ladder was added after the fact by the developer, obviously in a very precarious location, without much thought given to what it takes to maintain a pool. So here I have some other existing condition photos here. This is the side view of the house. There's a little bit better angle for you to see that screened pool equipment on the exterior. There's that steep, narrow, dangerous ladder. And also here's the property owner for scale to show you exactly how tall and dangerous that is.
And in the background, there's a set of steps.
That's correct.
That's in the five-foot access.
I believe your code, I'll let Mary correct me, but I believe your code allows encroachments for accessing...
Is that right, John? What is that, you're allowed to put a ladder in the five-foot setback?
Stairs are allowed to encroach into the setbacks, that is correct.
So why have a law?
We have a difference between this cantilevered structure and stairs.
John, please. If you've got a law that says you can't put anything under five foot, how come we've got ladders or we've got a set of steps?
So we have different regulations when it deals with access, as it does for equipment. And what Mary was outlining to you is exactly correct. When you start looking at, and we've had discussions about this with previous councils, when you have access to elevated properties that are in flood zones, we have made accommodations for them to allow stairs so they can get out, ingress and egress. That is necessary as part of, consistent with the life safety code and it allows it to also be consistent with other standards of the building code. When you start talking about equipment for HVAC or for pool equipment or for this type of ladder, that is not included in those exceptions. And those are those type of structures that are not allowed to go into the five-foot setback without a variance. That's why we brought a filter here tonight to talk about a variance. But there is a distinction.
If you get a variance, you get the steps.
No, sir. That is part of the required ingress and egress for the house.
Don't they put six-foot wide steps?
No, sir. I think they just have to meet minimum building code standards and I don't remember the width off the top of my head, but there is a minimum width and a minimum rise and run to the stairs as well.
Question I have is, why do we have a setback if we can fill it in with stuff? The fire department can't get through there?
Well, not our fire department, but the life safety code is one of the reasons we're looking to allow these. So the access in and out of the house is part of what is required to be in that setback. That's why it's not affected by that rule.
But he's not going in and out of the house, that's probably an electric meter?
I heard someone say yes, but my eyes are not that good, so, yes.
Okay, go ahead. Go on with your presentation, please.
Just to chime in with what Mr. Dolmer said. Setbacks in zoning exist generally to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. So some encroachments such as this are allowed where it would further the interests of the public health, safety, and welfare. So that's why the stairs are there and that's ultimately the crux of the request today. So I hope that that...
Why can't you put stairs up to this?
It wouldn't be building code.
You can't put steps up?
Good evening.
This isn't the first time, the first rodeo I've been on with this.
No, Aida Lonergan with Community Development, I am one of your structural building inspectors. So the complication you would have on building a traditional staircase for access in this situation is that the rise and run would exceed the allowable heights. So you'd actually have to extend it further into the front of the dwelling and to your front setbacks. A staircase can only go so tall before you have to stop and have a platform and railings. So the limit of encroachment would be actually more significant to try to add a permanent staircase for access to that platform under the Florida Building Code.
Okay, does the architect or the builder have any responsibility for putting this in a situation like this?
Under Florida Building Code, that would have been a design standard and I think that the applicant would be better equipped to answer for that.
Okay.
My name is Jim Foley, the owner of the property. We bought it about three years ago now, December?
December 2020.
And we moved here permanently from Maryland. And when we bought the house, there was no ladder there at all, right? And so we didn't, we assumed the pool equipment was underneath the pool because there was a door to this room, you know, half the size, the big pillars. And so we move in and we call a pool company to service the pool. And they showed up and they said, no, we know all about this, we're not servicing your pool. So we went through five or six different pool companies, Pincham Penny, all the local ones, even some further out. They all said, no, we will not do it because what the builder did, when we called him, he said, we left a 30-foot ladder under your house to gain access. And when I say 30-foot ladder, it takes two people to even carry this thing. It's huge and heavy. So I filed a suit against the builder. And while we were back in Maryland, unbeknownst to us, the builder came and had that affixed, that ladder, a permanent ladder, okay? But one, I'm afraid of heights and I have seizure disorders, I'm not going up there. So Jennifer is my wife, she goes up. And, you know, this is a little heavy just dry, but imagine this wet. It gets to about 30 pounds. She carries that up there with, we take a boat rope ladder and she carries it up and, or pulls it up once she gets to the top. And then she does what she, we don't know anything about pool equipment, but she turns it off and then she lowers it down to me, I clean it. I mean, it is ridiculous. It's just...
I brings myself up there and bring it up 21 feet, the soaking wet thing.
Sounds like you ought to re-engineer something here. Your developers suck you here.
Yeah, so what happened was, the builder maxed out on the square footage, so he couldn't put the pool equipment anywhere else. If you look at this here, on that wall there, that's a bathroom on the lanai. And that area was initially going to be a shower. But they had nowhere to put the pool equipment, so he, boom, put it there. And I guess we were supposed to notice that, but we didn't. So really, what we're trying to do is get that catwalk to just go across to meet the lanai where there's already a railing. And so just go right over here and then have a little door there. So, and then we'd get rid of this. And by the way, that ladder is, this is actually our neighbor's property over here. You have to get on our neighbor's property to gain access to that ladder and it is very steep, so...
Yeah, that's a bad situation for sure.
I hope that explains...
You still have the lawsuit?
We do, it...
It'd take forever, but...
What was the... We lost summary judgment, so now we're appealing that, so...
You don't have a Trump sign on your house, do you?
I do.
Okay, I live on Hickory Boulevard. When I get my building back together, Hickory Shore...
Yeah, it's a Trump DeSantis.
You're lucky to get through the storm. You have much damage?
We did, we, the whole bottom part got wiped.
Yeah, same with Hickory Shore.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion or any...
Motion to approve the variance.
Hey, we have a motion, a second. Is there any public comment? Seeing none?
Yes, clerk.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Penny.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to provide our final presentation on the city's wayfinding signage and gateway feature master plan. Stantec is here to give us our final presentation. Any remaining feedback we receive today will be incorporated in the final plan and that will be the completion of this project.
Going to need a little support here to get our...
Did I hear your name?
It's Kevin.
Kevin Magan from Stantec.
Kevin, okay.
I think I got it.
Okay, Kevin.
Okay, so this is a PDF, so I'm going to be working with this and you'll see most of the screen. There you go. Mayor and council, good evening. Thank you again for your time tonight and want to take just a brief few minutes to run through this presentation. You've all contributed to this in the past. I know you're aware of this and I appreciate also earlier public comment about moving this project into actual public domain, so... First slide here, or image, really presents to you what we think are the mainstay, the main elements, primary colors and things that the signage should carry wherever we are in the city, in city sign and wayfinding requirements. We're strong to the blue and the white as real dominant city colors for the signage. The lettering and the messaging oftentimes and mostly done in black and that's on a white background for strong legibility. Materials, again, we've taken from the history of the community, a sense of what these materials ought to be. Modern-day application and modern-day materials, but to evoke a bit of the history of the city. It's seco, precast concrete, metal finishes and the like. And these are the primary elements, if you will, that bring our, the signage package together. Think of these as building blocks, if you will. We like to keep the logo straightforward and simple. Any of the messaging, the arrows, the blue P for parking, again, all easily read, both at pedestrian scale, but also from a vehicle standpoint. Again, think of a vehicle moving faster through the environment. Things have to be scaled up and read accordingly at that speed. This is the family of signs and it's evolved over time that in a way that really has just continued to become more inclusive, I think, is the way to put that. And from the left-hand side of this image, we have our primary entry or gateway signs. And these basically go two by two down through and I'll, we'll see these in a little bit more detail coming up. All the way down through our beach access signs, our facility ID signs, our trail signs and our, actually, street names and street signs. And again, when I go back to that blue color, it's a complementary color that already exists in the city-owned street signs now. And so again, we're looking at continuing to carry that through. Lighting, which is in the upper inset image, lighting is important. Now, the signage work that we do and any work that's associated with it, landscape would be sort of the thought. Really, we're always dark sky compliant and that dark sky compliance is particularly important to the code. Where we can provide accent lighting in the signage, that accent's either part of that sign or its shape. Again, it remains dark sky compliant and really an edge treatment to the sign.
Yes, is it solar, solar powered?
None of it is solar powered. None of it is, is solar-powered at this point.
You've got to run a wire to it. You've got to have a meters on everything.
Most of the signs where we are suggesting power, the power exists. And that's. But, but.
What's wrong with solar?
Solar, another piece of equipment, maintenance of the photo cells. You've got to have battery storage. It's a, it's a whole nother piece, an element, that I think is a complex.
Running an electric meter for each of these is a bunch of money, too. You're going to have to meter all, every sign. You have three different signs.
You may, you may need to. Not many of the signs that we're suggesting have lighting on them. A lot of this is done, a lot of the lighting of the signage is done in the reflection of the ambient light, streetlights, headlights.
I understand that. I see, I see flat, I see signs on, on the road that have little panels, and they work fine. Light and lights.
Yeah, I think part of it, Mayor, is that we're looking.
I think, Mayor and council, that's going to be site-specific for each of these signs. Some of these locations already have power. Some, if it's not feasible to place the power, are more expensive. They may not be illuminated. We're going to use reflective materials on the sign. So, it's going to be a case-by-case basis as we install them.
And, you know, to that point, this is a citywide program. And there are some remote areas where that may be an application. And I think one of the things that's really important, and we'll get into the flexibility here in a minute, is that the context of signs, and we've, we're specifically pointing to where we think these signs belong and what they say. But the context of any one sign that may require lighting, if it is remote and if it is far from power or power source, then solar is, is an option for use. The question will be is whether it needs to be lit or not, so. So, the next series of slides here, really, I'm focusing in on that, that family that was presented initially. And so, these are the primary entry and ID signs. We have two sizes. The reason for that is, for instance, at Logan Boulevard, we have a nice wide area of city-owned right-of-way that we can do a larger sign into and off the shoulder. That may be the sign on the left. Other areas, 41 corridor might be an example. We oftentimes have narrower settings that we want to be able to announce in similar fashion and same way. But that narrower setting requires that narrower sign on the right-hand side. And so, we have that ability and flexibility, again, very site-specificly, to always bring a primary ID sign to where they belong, but we have a choice. How do we manage that in a, with all the other things that are part of the context?
Did you say Hickory Boulevard?
Logan.
I said Logan.
Logan, okay, sorry.
Long, long-term, Hickory, Hickory would deserve one on the north end.
That's Lee County Road.
So, and sometimes Lee County will be a participant in the sign, sign review, sign permitting, so. The next set of signs down are your vehicular IDs. They're smaller than the primary ID, but again, they have two general conditions of how they may be employed. One is a base of the sign at ground level. We're able to build that sign up, as you see on the left. And again, that would be a sign that enjoys generally a wider right-of-way and less conflict, if you will, for utilities and other things. On the right-hand side, what we do is we take a vertical approach and a narrower approach, still provide the same messaging, but that may, again, be in a more congested right-of-way area that gives you direction from a, from a driver's standpoint of where you're headed in the city, key points in the city. And these are always to city-owned facilities or city-owned areas. Historic district would be an area. City-owned facility would be City Hall, for, for example. At the pedestrian level, we have, again, the same philosophy. Two types of signs to provide directions to the pedestrian. One where we've got a wider or an urban space that would take a base and ground-mounted sign. Historic downtown is be, be an example, the sign on the left. We enjoy some wider streetscape and, and other areas like that, we get the sign on the left where we're constricted in that, but still have information that we want to provide to the pedestrian or bicyclist. The sign on the right is, is what is applied. Now, in the lower right, there's a small little inset. One of the things that we've developed over time with this package is we also don't want to be presenting, if you will, all the connections and, and stuff on the back of signs. So, we actually have a, a primary sign plate that has the message on it. And on the back side, we actually have brought in this, this back plate that carries an image with it. And that helps hide connections. It does a nicer job. We're able to put a, we have, you know, see in a minute, tone-on-tone, either in grays or blues, a palm-leaf pattern. And even on the front side where that can be read with the primary, we may say we're in the historic district, or we may say we're in, in another district in the city. The beach access ID signs, as well as, you know, as we went through the city, we said, "Boy, you know, we really want to announce that we're coming into the beach." But we just pulled that beach access sign that right now is a pole and a canvas number. And these are Lee County signs, so they're a participant with us, if you would, in, in replacing those signs. But we also take the sign on the left. Just before we go over the bridge into the beach area, we have an opportunity to announce the beach. It's one of our greatest natural assets and a great, great way to celebrate it. So, this would be the signage program, if you would, for, for the beach parking and that area. This is an example of two things. On the left is the facility IDs. These are city-owned facilities, and we announce that facility. Here is simply Parks and Recreation. We have the logo, city logo as part of it. On the right-hand side, actually is a trail ID. And you, as you notice, it's, we really break off an element, if you will. And it's an element that's really part of just about each sign. For that trail ID, it just becomes smaller and more in context and scale with, with the trails. And the information of that trail is on that ID or on that sign. And again, by adding that small disc on the one side, we can tell how far down the trail we've gone. Half-mile, mile, mile and a half, et cetera. These images generally inspired, I think, what our recommendation is for street signage in, across the community. The 041 street corridor is really well-set on a, a traditional post sign. The signs are framed, and it's really nice detail. And we, we encourage that to be continued. Can be continued north on 041. It could be pulled back into the neighborhoods. But as we go over to Felt Sav, really, a, a much more modern approach to that sign is to get out of the different unistrut and screwed connections into a round aluminum pole. We could choose to make those poles black. Now, it'd be round aluminum, and the black matches the traditional pole. But we think those are the two standards that the city ought to continue forward with, along with the blue sign plate for the street. This is just a black and white of the pattern I was talking about on that, on that back panel that helps hide the connections on the other side. Here it is with a blue-on-blue tone. And so, we think, again, by, by helping hide and, and yet decorate, if you will, the street and the environment with this, that's a nice, nice approach. And that's, that's it for tonight's presentation.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
We're ready to take a break. Are you?
Can I just ask one question before? Between the black and the white poles and, and then natural illumination, you know, like nighttime, which is better?
Between the black and the white pole?
Which pole?
Like, for the, like, you sort of said on.
Actually, it's a great question. I don't think the pole has a lot to do with it, but it's the reflective nature of the sign. That's really what, that's what you want to say to you, "Stop," or, yeah.
Thank you.
So, so Mayor and council, we're not asking for any decision on this tonight. This was the final review, and as, and long as the council is comfortable, then we will move with the formalization of this as the master plan for signway, our signs and gateways. And we'll implement that through the CIP. You have funding in the CIP, and you will prioritize for us where you would like us to carry on with the signage.
Yes, Jesse?
Yes, so for clarification, if we wanted to discuss the green and the blue sign situation that we have going on, and whether we're going to use the black or the aluminum pole, those are decisions that would be after.
Well, I think we're getting the feedback, and what, what the recommendation is, is that we move away from, I'm going to say it wrong, the pink pole at all. It's going to be a solid pole, and I think we could, we can, the recommendation, we can look at where it's appropriate to have that pole be black or be aluminum, depending on maintenance issues and where we go from. But I think the general recommendation for this plan is that we move away from green and blue signs, that we move to blue signs only with the white lettering, and that you have an applique on the city signs to denote that that is a city, that that is a city road. We will not, because there's the confusion that happens between the, the green and the blue.
That's perfect.
Okay, a motion to approve?
Well, or just move forward.
Motion.
I think we were just looking for consensus that this, you're comfortable.
No objection.
No objection. So, we will move forward with this as the final product.
I propose we leave for 20 minutes. We're on break.
20 minutes? Okay.